My name is Teresa Kittredge and I'm the founder of 100 Rural Women. I'm so excited to be here with these two amazing speakers today. And please let us know in the chat where you're joining from. And we're going to get started right away. I know people will be joining as we, as we go here, but as I said, Teresa Kittredge, 100 Rural Women is all about creating connections and inspiring leadership. And we just started this series and Jasmine will talk a little bit more about this, but started this series to figure out, how can we demystify paths to leadership and have everyone see a path for themselves? So we're starting out in the civic mentorship space to talk about public office and what it's like to serve in office. So we have these amazing public servants with us today. And I am just going to turn it right over to Jasmine. Before I do that, I want to remind people, go out and vote. And there's a lot, our Secretary of State has great information on resources for, for voting and absentee voting and all those pieces. So we will be chatting, putting links in the chat of great resources on that website and on national websites where you can learn more about voting. So Jasmine Terry is our graduate research assistant and she is at the University of Minnesota campus in Minneapolis. And Lindsay Rowling is our undergrad at the University of Minnesota Morris. And I'm going to hand it right over to Jasmine. And again, welcome, welcome. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Hello, everybody. As Teresa has mentioned, I am the graduate research assistant at the University of Minnesota Morris. I've actually been with 100 rural women for a little over a year now. I was an intern in my undergrad career last year, and then I just couldn't get enough. So I graduated, went to grad school, and now I'm back. I'm just going to introduce 100 Rural Women a little bit more and what this project is. So 100 Rural Women is a nonprofit and nonpartisan organization interested in providing resources to support and serve rural women. We envision a world where more rural women lead positive change for themselves, their families, communities, the nation, and the world. We aim to achieve this by identifying and creating relationships, networking, leadership, mentorship, and civic engagement. We just completed over 100 meetings across the state of Minnesota as part of our 100 in 100 project, where we learn from and listen to women. This resulted in over 3,000 requests for support. Building from that engagement and research, we are now in the process of creating and building a civic mentorship network with the end goal of engaging 100 rural elected women to mentor 100 rural women to pursue public service. In addition, providing public service and voter education. This spring, we were also fortunate to work with three graduate students at the U of M Humphrey School on a capstone project called April 2022, The Barriers, Breakthroughs, and Backbone of Elected Rural Women. In this project, the graduate students conducted interviews with elected women and learned a lot from these interviews. We are now holding these informational slash educational meetings called Learn About It. So, welcome to the beginning stage of our civic mentorship network. If anyone's interested or knows any women interested in public office and is looking for a mentor, we will provide a survey after these sessions for you to fill out and indicate your interest. If you have any friends and were unable to attend, but are interested in learning more about these positions, we are recording all of these meetings and we'll post the video recordings on our website. So let's get started today. We will first be introducing our speakers for today. And then you also will get to hear directly from them after I ask them a few questions about their offices. If you have any questions throughout the meeting, please feel free to post them in the chat. Otherwise, towards the end, we will actually be hosting a space where you can ask your questions by either raising your hand or you can ask them in the chat if you don't feel comfortable asking them in front of everybody. You can DM one of our workers and our staff members, Caitlin. So, without further ado, let's introduce our speakers.
So Jasmine, am I correct? You want us to introduce ourselves? All right.
Yes, go for it.
We've agreed that I'll start. And as I start, I had just want to call out that on this call are a number of other county commissioners, women county commissioners who have enjoyed us today. So at some point, I encourage them to contribute to this conversation as well. So I see Jean Molitor on the, excuse me, Deanne Molitor and and Jean Burkhart, former commissioner, and Jenna Kelly. All our women with experience as county commissioners, in addition to Terrell and myself. So we're really glad to see you here. I am an Olmsted County Commissioner. Olmsted County is in Rochester, Minnesota. And I've been a county commissioner for 10 years. And, but I've been involved with Olmsted County really since the 1970s. I'm at the end of my long career. And I got into public service. Really, I didn't expect to get into elected office. I was going into public service. And that started when I was an undergraduate at the University of Minnesota and spent a year in South America. I'd started out thinking I was going to be a teacher. And that year in South America where I, I think that there's an image in my mind of waking up one early morning in this lovely climate with no screens on the windows and the shutters open and hearing noise outside my bedroom window. I was, I was a room, I was a rooming with the family. And there were four children at the curb, a little girl about eight, two little brothers, and she was holding a baby. And they were going through our garbage. And that image has stayed with me of why, you know, it pulled me into reproductive healthcare and reproductive rights. It pulled me into wanting to be involved in changing conditions so people can succeed. So I've been very active in, at our county level. It started out, I worked as a, started, I've done a lot of different things over the years. So I've been a program manager. I've been a human service planner. That led me to be in contact with our legislators. Our legislators that, after working with me a few years, when one of them wanted to retire, the first woman who ran on her own for the Minnesota Senate, talked me into running for the Senate. I served in the Senate for 14 years. And I really enjoyed it. And I specialized in human services. But the partisanship really got to me. And I left, I left a long time ago. I left in 2007. And then five years later, people came and asked me to run for county board. My generation, women generally were asked by somebody else. It was like, me? I should run for office? Your generation's, younger generation's entirely different. I'm constantly meeting with young women who know they want to serve in elected office and very happy to mentor them. I've run campaign schools for women. I really believe it's important for women to serve. We change the dialogue. We change the conversation. We change the agenda. And for county board, only about 18% of the women of county commissioners are women. Now, I love human services. And in Minnesota, we have a state administered locally delivered human service system. So at the county level, I'm engaged every day on issues related to how we deliver our, our, our social services, how we protect vulnerable people, how we deal with people who offend the law, how we protect the public health and have healthy communities by doing prevention through public health and partnerships with organizations in our community. So I have a lot of passion for county work especially. And I'm happy to be serving another term. The next, I'm on the ballot now. So if I serve the full term, I will have been 14 years in the Senate and 14 years as a county commissioner with lots of county work in between. And I, along the way, met Terrell Clark when I was in the legislature. She also served in the legislature. She's going to introduce herself now.
Thanks Sheila. Sheila is both a good friend and a mentor and excited to be with you. I will say because of Dee and Jenna and Jean, it's a little intimidating having just the two of us talk. So I agree with Sheila. Please pop in. They have loads of experience and they are wonderful, powerful women. So I'm part of the group of people who was never, women who was never going to run for office. I happened to be born in Virginia and my dad was serving in the Navy, grew up in suburban Chicago and then in Phoenix. And along the way, eventually got both my undergraduate degree at Drake and then masters in counselor education at Arizona State. I really wasn't sure what I wanted to do. For me Sheila, it kind of was a similar thing. I ended up getting to counsel at risk teenagers and their families. It was an incredible job. But it was obvious that no matter how much each of those kids or their families were trying to work on their own stuff, or excuse my language shit, as they would say, the system often got in the way. And so started doing community work among other things. And it became really apparent that getting involved with other, other people to make change was the way to go. When I had a teenage girl, she wasn't, I can't even say she was a young woman, girl who was pregnant. And she couldn't qualify for getting any assistance at that time because Arizona didn't have emancipated minors. And we worked at that with the big county there, which was the big dog in Arizona, because there's only 15 counties, to get her healthcare. But not each kid is going to be able to have one person go advocate for. So I started doing more community work. My husband and I moved to Minnesota 34 years ago with what were then two young sons. And I decided after doing a couple of other cool community things, go back to law school. Because in my head, I thought if I want to create change, I need tools, legislative change, policy change. You don't need that, but I thought I needed that. And it has served me well. I worked for Legal Aid and the Children's Defense Fund, and I ran the statewide community action partnership. And during that time, I got to work with a lot of Head Start moms, a lot of people who really felt disempowered and really tried to work both on how you're changing communities, organizations, and then laws. But again, I wasn't going to run for office. If I was ever going to run for office, the one office I thought I'd want to do was county commissioner. Then in our area, it really was, except for this one other woman at that time, Matt. And I saw the difference that was made. I know we'll get to talk about that more. I got talked into, worn down was more like it to run for the state senate. It took me three times to win. Again, I'm not from here. There's a whole lot of other reasons with it. I loved serving. I fairly quickly was in leadership. Got to be the public spokesperson for the majority, among other things. And I left because I decided to run for Congress in what ended up being a not very good year. I don't regret doing that. But I kind of wish I had stayed where I was. I've gotten to, since then, I did a lot of higher education. And when this seat opened in 2018, I seized the moment. It was like a mini legislative race though, because the former legislator was also running. Like Sheila, a real passion of mine is health and human services. I get to work on a number of other things too. I chair our national associations, technology and telecommunications, think broadband, which does lead back to health and human services. And right now I'm getting to chair our state associations, public health and human services committee. But it really is that local work where we can come together in ways that are different than what you see happen at the legislature that is really made my heart sing. And Sheila and Dee and I are all somehow running and opposed this year, which is kind of a miracle. Jenna's got a real race. And so supporting great women like Jenna, who are rerunning as well as new women running are continue to be important as well.
Awesome. Thank you. You both are just amazing. And we're so lucky to have you here. So I have a few questions, just three of them for the two of you. If you guys can answer them about a minute or two each. And then we'll go into questions after that. But the first question I have for both of you, which you both kind of touched on is, why did you run for office?
You know, I remember being a program manager for the county. And so I had been the first regional coordinator for Planned Parenthood. And that was a very controversial thing in the seventies. And I got sued and it was, you know, I did it for six years. And then I decided it was time to do something else. So I was going to go to law school, just like Terrell. And I applied and was accepted to law school. And then I had six, I quit my job. So I had six months. So I went to work for the county. I went to work in corrections, thinking I'd get to see a little bit more about the criminal justice system. And as I worked as the volunteer coordinator in corrections, I began, I began to realize that my calling was really not to serve in the, in the judiciary, in the, in the law, but to really be a program manager. And I started, I started realizing that a lot of what affected people's outcomes were the policies that were set. So I went from being a staffer to wanting to be a program manager. So I'd have more impact. From a program manager, I thought, no, it's really the planners who are influencing the board. That's where I really want to go. So I became the county's human service planner. Then, then the county assigned me to work on our legislative agenda. And I watched the state legislature set policies that the counties had to implement. And so it was really kind of like, you know, if you really want to change things, where are the changes? Who's directing the change? And ultimately, when I got the chance, although they had to talk me into it to run for the legislature, the legislature sets the policies for so many of the ways that we deliver services. But bottom line is they tell us what you, what we must do. We decide at the county level how we're going to do it, how much of it we're going to do, for whom, who, where are we going to focus? What is our particular community need? Who is overlooked? And so a lot of, if you really want to impact on how services are delivered, then really, and a particularly interested in social services, public health corrections, then it's really at the county level. So, but then because of this position, maybe you'll get to later, I can, just as Terrell talked about, being on statewide committees where you're also influencing the legislature or statewide policy, there's a lot of opportunity. She's involved at the national level. I'm choosing not to be involved at the national level. But I've started organizations in my region. I've started, or I, I'm on two statewide task forces. And so I'm working on policy both at the local level and at the state level. And, and I really want to create change. I want to make this a healthy, wonderful place for all of our residents. And the policies that we set determine people's opportunities.
That's awesome. As you can see, we don't pay attention to time limits. So you have to stop us. I could say that to my mind, because I can do this. She and I both do this. So for me, I, I saw one of the counties in central Minnesota. So I live in St. Cloud. Stearns County has about 160,000 people. Say clubs in three counties, which is kind of weird and makes things complex. And then it gets really rural really fast. So get to work on a lot of cool things. And originally, what I, a couple of things that really made me want to do this was when I was in league, when I was working for Legal Aid, I was both practicing and doing legislative practice. And one of the counties in our area, Sherburne County, was a pilot for the Minnesota Family Investment Program. And they were doing amazing things. And I saw their board treating all people in a really good and respectful way. They were breaking down barriers at that time. There were many good things. And that was amazing. It was amazing to work with them. And then another county to the north of us that I'm not going to, well, I'll say at the time, it was Morrison County. They were still dragging people in front of what they called their welfare board and saying things like, so and so told me that such and so came into your room and you really shouldn't be getting this assistance. And I was horrified. So what I saw was county commissioners really being able to make the difference. As Sheila was talking about, how people were treated, what ways, what were you doing? How do you get rid of barriers? The other thing I hadn't thought about until we were talking this morning was I did a clerkship one summer with Legal Aid. And I did my law paper on it. And I wrote about establishing the right to shelter in Minnesota. And it actually became the foundation, because at that point, we still had poor relief laws for emergency assistance having to be resunded to by counties within 24 hours. And so that was another way that counties, you know, counties were just only doing our area, you know, from nine to five, eight to five. You have an emergency in that time, fine, we'll get to it. No, that's not good enough. If you've got a mom and young kids that are out in the cold, you've got to do something now. So that, that for me was a big part of it. And, you know, because we both do a lot of work on health and human services, and I do a lot locally too. I will tell you these statewide and the national things. You don't get paid more because you're doing that. It's because you have a passion for it, right? And I could see Dee's face. She's doing a bunch of things that are pretty cool in other places too. But I serve on, you know, we now have watersheds. I'm our person from Stearns County on the St. Cloud Mississippi River watershed, which is just starting. We do a lot of water and water quality and land use related issues, transportation. So, you know, for me, those things interact. When I was working with those at-risk teenagers, there was at least eight different kinds of state agencies that impacted their lives. So if you're somebody who likes to, you know, solve problems, which is what we get to do locally and then kind of work together with others to figure out how you're removing obstacles and create opportunities. County positions are really good. And as Sheila was saying, you can choose to figure out, I'm going to work on solving this particular problem right here. And you can also do it in other ways in partnership with people across the street or across the country too. All of those are really great things.
That's awesome. I think we're all very happy. Y'all decided to run for office. So our next question is, what do you do in your office you serve in? And what does like an average day look like?
There is no average day. That's the simple answer. And people can choose, some commissioners choose that they go to their county board meetings, which usually meet twice a month. And then they're assigned to a couple of committees. I have colleagues who, who show up for the board meetings, but never show up for any of the other committees that they're assigned. Of our seven member board, there are two of us that are active on the state level. Five are not. So it's really, you have, you know, you're expected to show up for county board meetings. County boards usually meet twice a month. Some boards meet all day. What you do in a, in a large measure depends on the size of your county. So if you are a county of 4,000 people or a county of a million and a half, the job is different. And so what, one of the things I like best about it in some ways is I can choose how much of myself I want to put into the job. There's a, there's kind of a minimum of showing up to the board meetings, reading the packets and voting, attending some briefings. But there's a, there's a, there's an endless array of things you can choose to be engaged in, from, you know, event after event in your community to establishing policy groups to study issues that you think need more attention. It's, it's a tremendous variation. And that's one of the, one of the challenges sometimes, because we all work the job a little differently. But it's also really one of the benefits for, for people who want to make a difference in their communities. It's, you can pretty much, not entirely, you can define it. Maybe like Terrell answered and Dee and Jenna, if you want to talk about what your days are like, please join us.
Mine too vary. I, you know, I like the legislature where, you know, a chunk of your year is going to be crazy. When I was serving there, I was tied up between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM most days during the week. And because I was in leadership when we negotiate with the governor, it was included the middle of the night. And when I say negotiate, at that point, it really was like staring at each other for long enough for, I guess, the press to think that something must have been done. But it was crazy, right? The craziness. But the rest of the year, mostly it's constituent related stuff or building, you know, working together to figure out bills. Which makes certain kinds of jobs really hard in the legislature. I would argue, if done right, and I have no colleagues that just fill Sheila's description, but I do have a couple that go to their, we, we all serve on a number of committees, a number, not just a couple, a number of committees. Some are community, some of our, our own. I, they, they go those, I think, depending on how long they are, how tired they get, you know, that might impact what they do outside of it. But I think it could be very hard to have a full-time job and do this job unless it's an incredibly flexible one. We have a former commissioner, Mark Sacre, who ran the Boys and Girls Club in our area. But he kind of deal with them to be quote unquote 80% time. And he still was doing the county job halftime. So that meant he was working, and he wasn't really doing that job 80%, really doing it full-time. So unless you have a flexible job, it can be kind of a challenging one. But we at least work with people on their outside schedules. But if, for example, if you have a family and you're doing some flexible jobs, it can be okay. I think personally, it would be hard to do this while forget state or national work, just to really do what needs to be done without be expecting probably at least 40 or 50%. My joke is, it would be hard for me to figure, it's hard for me to figure out how I'd have a really steady other job in part because every second week of the month, a number of my local committees meet. And then in September and October, I have multi-day meetings that I'm really expected to go to. Or one that I choose to go to, because hardly any, it's a transportation fly-in. Hardly any women go. So I, I, that's something I choose to do because then I can do transportation work. But you know, if you're, what do you say to a job? Okay, every second week of the month, you can't really schedule me. And I have some other committee meetings. Oh, and then I've got this block of time that's hard. Now, having said that, Sheila and I also work really hard for in the summer to not really have anything on Mondays or Fridays. So we can enjoy the wonderful Minnesota summers. So it doesn't work.
Yeah. But, because it doesn't work.
It doesn't, but we try. And I would say my calendar looked happier this summer than it did before I really tried to do that. But we
Interrupted you too. I just want to point out that on my board, there are at least two people who own businesses. It works, it's very compatible with farming, for instance.
Yeah. What I was saying was if you've got, if you don't have flexibility in it. And then the other piece I was going to say is that, again, to do it right, you tend to meet with constituents, you work with the different departments. So again, it depends on how much somebody wants to put into that. Real estate, my parents were realtors. It would probably work fine with that. But if you go around the state, it's hard to find a whole lot of people who have a massively full-time structured job and do this. I've done teaching. You could teach college. Teaching school would be a little harder because we meet in the daytime for our board meetings.
So in the Twin Cities, the commissioners are full-time positions. And Hennepin and Ramsey County, they have staff. They are paid over $100,000 a year. So it depends where you, what county you're in, you know.
Right. So for 85 counties, you don't get to, you know, it's really Dakota and Washington County make pretty good dollars too. The rest of us are paid so-called part-time.
Yeah. It's considered a part-time job outside of the metro area.
Yeah.
Outside of Hennepin, Ramsey, Washington, Dakota counties.
Well, going off of that, actually, our next question is, what are the benefits of being county commissioner? And like, that's benefits outside of the money aspect of it. What kind of benefits do you guys experience?
Well, I think I'm saying the same thing again. I can work on the issues I most care about. And I can raise up issues that are ignored. So one of mine, when I first got elected 10 years ago, I'll give you two examples. One came from some constituents who are really upset that we have a property within the city limits of Rochester called Graham Park that the county board had been completely neglecting. And literally roofs were caving in. And it was right in the middle of our city. So I started working with groups and I've been working for 10 years. I've not accomplished everything I want. But that place is in a different situation, because it had an advocate on the board saying, we can't neglect this property. We need to make improvements. And we've made improvements. A little closer to my heart is I had been working on early childhood education issues as a consultant. The years between the county board, when they were in for county board and when they left the legislature. And I became very passionate about adverse childhood experiences, about the implications that that has for children. And one of the, one of the populations that I feel very strongly is ignored, and we have great opportunity, is the children of incarcerated parents. And I was able to, I went to my own county and they were like, no, we don't do it in them. And they were very resistant. So I went to, I went to the Association of Minnesota Counties and we formed a work group that looked at the question of children of incarcerated parents. From there, we went and we invited the Sheriff's Association to join us. And then we went to the state community health services advisory council and asked them to do a work group on it. And they did that. And then from there, the Juvenile Justice Advisory Council has a permanent subcommittee on children of incarcerated parents that I now chair. And we are working with a number of jails across the state of Minnesota. And the governor even had things in his budget proposal that didn't get funded, that would have put a lot of emphasis on how we work with those children to reduce the trauma and to change their outcomes. So that's a personal passion that I've, you know, now in my own county, I'm so excited. Our own county jail is finally doing a curriculum within the jail. We have staff assigned. 10 years ago, we didn't have that. That's what, that's my big motivation. I made a lot more money as a consultant than I do as a county commissioner. And I had a lot more flexibility in my schedule. I had my summers. I had those Mondays and Fridays. So, Terrell, how about you?
I actually do think flexibility and time is one of the benefits. And I guess because of the work I was doing in between when I was serving and doing this, I didn't have any flexibility. I just worked really long hours a time. So I think the ability to pick and choose the topics you're on, you, you're involved with. For me, because I do think everything is connected, I'm really interested in how things are connected. So locally, one of the things I love about being a commissioner, and it certainly can be true for other positions, is since none of us are in one of those four really big counties that we were talking about, that we, we, we can pick up the phone and call anybody that we want to. that we 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 um can pick up the phone and call anybody that we want to and develop relationships with those people. We can get answers from them. They somehow still think they need to like be accountable in some way, which is kind of funny because just because you have a a title doesn't mean that that should be the case. But it's really great when you can work, whether it's on housing or early childhood or things like broadband, honestly, you know, I, I think um you know, we've got that ability to kind of um find and know and cut through things where really big areas can't do that. Um, so not only do you have the the ability to do it because you can find them, but they will respond to you and you'll respond to them. So doing things differently is um, is 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 something that we can offer. So an example locally, um, our area has ras- rapidly diversified. When I moved to Saint Cloud in nineteen eighty-eight, it was over ninety-nine percent white. Um, we are now probably at about twenty-five percent people of color. It kind of depends upon which area you live in. Um, our county is not that diverse, you know, if the further out you go rurally, the less diverse it is. But we are one economy. So we get to to help remind people that we need, we've got a lot of dairy. We have a lot of poultry uh plants. We've got a lot of crops as well as manufacturing, healthcare and education. But we need the, all of our folks, our egg producers, to be able to move their product. And we need enough nurses, et cetera, and the other part, like they're, we're all interdependent. So part of what I think is a benefit is you get to learn and listen and and see. So if you're somebody who's curious, I know we're gonna get to this question, but if you like to learn, it's a benefit because you really have awesome opportunities to learn about a number of issues and then connect people. Uh, because it'll help you think, hey, wait, I know this person over here, let's get you together. And then you get out of the way, that you let other people do that work.
The ability to convene, uh, to call people together to work on issues is whatever office, whatever elected office, there's the ability to convene. Your phone calls getting answered usually when you say it's Commissioner Sheila Kiskin calling. If I just it was Sheila Kiskin, they might or might not call, but if I'm the commissioner, they call. From the legislative, they call back. And the ability to shine light on things. Now, it doesn't mean, there's no direct path from here to there of what you might want to accomplish in public policy. It's always like, it's not like you're in a boat and you can say, we're going to that island. It's you're in, you're not in a motorboat, you're in a sailboat. You have to tack, but you know, you know where you want to end up, but you never, it's almost never a straight line. And you, and you almost always need allies to get there, whether they're on your board or whether they're in your community or whether they're in your state association. There's almost nothing with policy that changes from you to have an idea to somebody to do it. You really have to form allies, relationships and have strategies where you're working together toward that goal. But you can call it out. You can invite the allies. You can develop the strategy. It's when you're in the of the elected office.
Thank you. You ladies are wonderful. I do want to leave time for Q and A. So we're gonna go right into that. We already have a question. It is, how has the current divide that exists in America culture impacted your work as a county commissioner?
So one of the things I like best about county commissioner, I should have said that earlier, is at least where I am, it's a nonpartisan office. And I'm a little bit nervous because some of the people who are campaigning this year are waving what their identity, their party identity. I don't want that partisan politics to come into our county board. Our county board has seven members. We have people that are definitely strong conservatives. We have people who are definitely strong progressives. But we focus on the policy discussion, what the data shows us, what our history has been. And we aren't bringing in the the political platform of any party. And um, so I left the legislature long before it was as partisan as it is now, but I got drummed out on the basis of partisan politics. And so I'm, I, but then I would also say, look at the state of, if you look at the map of the state of Minnesota after the twenty twenty election, it's red everywhere. Republican red everywhere except uh urban centers, Rochester, Duluth, a little bit of Moorhead, a little bit of Mankato, the Twin Cities, and everything else is strong, strong Republican showing.
A little bit of Saint Cloud.
And Saint Cloud, forgot, a little bit of Saint Cloud, but not all of Saint Cloud. Kind of Saint Cloud, yeah. So the urban centers. So that political divide comes across as a a rural urban de- debate that's been going on in Minnesota. It's gotten much more entrenched. Now it's got politicized. And so we're having challenges on election integrity. We're having things that ha- that are really partisan um, that um are concerning. We're having demonstrations practically at some of our public comment periods. We're having um social media attacks on our elections staff. And and um, so that partisanship has crept in to local government, whether at the school board level, the city council level or the county board level. I'm hoping that we can stay nonpartisan.
So I was surprised to find out, and it took me a couple of years into this to even know it. So I didn't know it until recently that Minnesota is one of the few states where people run without partisan designation. So they run nonpartisely in the Twin Cities. They, you know, if you get an endorsement by a particular party, um, it th- then it's done. So putting that aside, since we're not talking about the Twin Cities, uh, I think Minnesota really has worked hard to keep our our um, our boards nonpartisan. And Sheila, you, kudos to you. You've you've been a really a loud voice about that for quite a while. My board, you know, we we're all over the place, although we're, we don't go very far left, but we're all over the place otherwise. And um, it's it's been a little tricky lately. One of the things I've always loved about doing local work, I've helped uh chair a number of school bond referendums, et cetera. And you know, the more local you are, the more you can get like the chamber and others to come together to have a yes, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z. So we're a bit more nimble that going back to the benefits. Um, and it, the partisan stuff kind of falls away there, but as Sheila was saying, it's been creeping in. So our board, our administrator had actually uh put together guidelines that we adopted. And then now another number of other counties have that we will only consider items that don't have a direct impact on our county business. And that was really important. We were getting, like I'll say, gun-related things. Both sides were trying to get us to do things. Well, we obviously don't make gun policy. So you know, that was, and it would have totally divided us. I will tell you when uh the past administration uh nationally tried to say that counties were gonna have to determine whether refugees were accepted into an area. Oh, my gosh, that started creating great havoc. And so, you know, the more we can stay in our lane, we have enough controversial things to work on, the better. And then it gives us, when it works best, an opportunity to really listen and learn from each other, which is something I do think at times the legislature has done, but doesn't do a very good job of right now.
Yeah, for sure. Definitely listen and learn. So we got another question. Um, can both you talk a little bit about mentorship work you both have been doing with county commissioner candidates?
Well, I mentioned early on that I um, I've been running campaign schools for women since two thousand and four. This year I didn't do one. I I I'm not exactly, can't even tell exactly why, except my own life was very turbulent. And I just didn't think I could take it on. Um, but um, I have, I I've seen success by by encouraging women to run and running simple campaign schools. Um, and so I I think that's important. I also think it's important, so I'm not running a school, but there are excited at how many women are running for our county board this year. There are four women running in three different races. We have one race where we're definitely gonna get a woman because two women are running against each other. So, and and most of those women I have had a relationship with at some point in the last few years. So um, that's one thing. Um, I think I mentioned to you earlier uh that Terrell and Dee uh, and I, I've been part of a cohort and Jenna, we invite you to join us. We took a course together this year through the National Association of Counties, a Leadership Development Course. Um, sixteen of us were able to sign up for this course through the Association of Counties. And that, that worked together. I mean, we learned some things from the course, but we also learned how valuable it was just to talk to each other once a week, which is what we did for twelve, fourteen, fifteen weeks. And now we're gonna start having a monthly um coffee and conversation with women, a lot uh county commissioners that will be open to all women who want to join us. And we'll, we're we're gonna create this as we go. But um, we're we're pulling each other right now about what what uh, what what Wednesday morning of the month, at what time would work best for the women who took the course and then we'll be opening it up to other women to join us. So that's another way to mentor. Um, I think mentorship, I wouldn't be who I am today if it weren't for the women who mentored me. Including Nancy Braddus, that woman senator, first woman to run on her own, who grabbed me by the scruff of my neck and said, I want you to run for my position because I want to retire. And I'm like, I don't want to run. No, you want to run. You're being good. You gotta do it. She ran a three-week campaign to get me to run. She was formidable. Eventually I said yes. So um, sometimes you need that kind of, you know, uh, when my generation, women had to be told, asked many times before they'd say yes. I said no many times before. She really, she really did put me up by the scruff of my neck and shake me. You're gonna do this, Sheila. So um, and I'm so glad she did. But there were other women who mentored me throughout my life. And we can do that for each other. We need to do that for each other. We need that in our family lives. We need that in our professional lives. And we certainly need it when we're to be in public office. So choose somebody. Choose someone who you want to be your mentor and go ask her to be your mentor. Choose some young woman that you see that that looks like she's, she's, you know, you you like her, you dislike her, and you want to get to know her better. So mentor her. And I, I have a cadre of women that I I consider my mentors that who I'm happy to to mentor. I I guess another thing I do is locally, I host a dinner once a month or for the AOD group, the Alliance of Women Electives. We go to dinner together once a month in a, in a, in a hotel uh restaurant. Because in Rochester, all the visitors, you know, you don't want to go all, if all the women electives were seen together, it'd be like, what are they doing? But since we go to this hotel where we get a lot of out of, you know, out-of-state national visits all the time, no one locally goes to this hotel for dinner. But we do. We get a private dining room. Um, we order off the menu and we vent if we need to vent. Or we just talk about what's going on, school board, county board, uh, city council, mayor. Uh, we have a, for our first female mayor in Rochester. And um, and uh, what am I forgetting? Legislators. Once a month.
I do want to um be cognizant of time and Terrell, I'll let you answer real quick.
Oh, that's okay. I think, I know, it's fine. It's okay.
Okay.
Actually, what I'd say in our area is it's really about mentoring women, period, running, wanting to run for office, recruiting. That I I I would, I still see now needing to convince women to run. It, there might be some who are ready, but most women in my area, two years ago, I called about twenty-five women about running for a seat that I thought was gonna be open. And none of them said yes. This year, a couple of women for county board, a couple of women um are running one minute through a primary. Um, we don't have any open seats, so it's always a little tricky. You know, I'm gonna do everything I can to encourage more women to run. So I'm helping our legislative candidates. I've done that for a long time, but you do have to think broadly. If I only got to talk, I mean, if I only got to be with county commissioners, I have to go a distance to find other women coming. Well, it's not true. Sherman County, they've got a kick-ass board. But aside from that, we don't have a lot nearby. Okay, Jasmine. I go to my railroad authority meeting too.
And I see we have a county commissioner candidate in the, on the call. Susan.
Yeah.
If you wanted to give like just a few words closing, maybe even like maybe briefly touch on Susan's question, you can. Otherwise, yeah, just a couple of words closing.
I missed Susan's question. I'm sorry.
So I'm gonna go first this time because I actually do have to go to a different meeting. Um, um, so what you, ru- losing close races is heartbreaking. It's totally heartbreaking. Yours was even closer than one of the ones I lost. You know, sometimes it's about re- re- and reframing winning. You know, when I first ran, I ran against somebody that nobody was mad at, somebody who I actually liked. I didn't think he was doing much, but I knew it was gonna take a while. So I got forty-six, just over forty-six percent of the vote that time. And that was like winning. And we knew I was gonna have to run again. I think sometimes people, it's humbling running. We don't know how many people don't know us until we run, unless you're in a very small area. Then you have to worry about how much other people know about you or what they think about you, right? I used to joke that I had to go door knocking a lot just so people could see I didn't have horns. Um, and I wanted people to look me in the eye and see I was a reasonable human being and that they could trust me because honestly, that kind of trumped everything else was, could could they relate? Did they think they could pick up the phone? So I would encourage, so I guess if you run off the same man, so yes, I ran, well, yeah, three times. Three times, hopefully is the charm. Hopefully you're doing a lot of direct voter contact, whether that's door knocking or phone calling and getting your friends and family to do it. That is the single biggest things. And when you're that close, that means you really can get there. So just, I hope, I wish you the best of luck this time and just tell your friends and family, you need them now. You need them to help you call and not just go into things. They need to help you talk to voters. That would be my advice.
Good advice. Don't give up.
Don't give up. We need you.
Thank you. I appreciate your um words of encouragement. All right. Well, um, thank you so much to our speakers. Uh, everyone can give them a round of applause. We really appreciate them taking time out of their day today. And then I will turn it over to Teresa to talk a little bit about how to stay connected with a hundred rural women.
Wonderful. Well, I wanna echo.
And I'm gonna have to pop up. I'm so sorry.
Thanks so much, Terrell.
Support one hundred women, rural women. We love you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much, Terrell and Sheila, and thanks so much, Jasmine and our staff for facilitating this today. And just, we're gonna pop in the chat here, voting information. Go up to the Secretary of State's office. You can see who's running. You can learn how to vote, all those other pieces, where to vote. Um, we um have a couple learn-it sessions. We're continuing this series. Wednesday night at seven, we have town board, um, six forty-five, pardon me, we have town board with Julie Lucas um, from Side Lake, which is north of Chisholm. And then uh, the following week, we have um, we have Kelly Lake, who's the sheriff in in um Carlton County. And we have uh Michelle Zender, who's going, the county commissioner in Nicklet County. And we'll have Julie Rosen talking about the US Senate. So we've got a big week coming up. Um, check out our website. Come see what we have. We have a great events calendar. We have a lot of different things going on. And um, it's all about figuring out how we can best support you and your efforts and let us know what we can do to um add value. So I'm just gonna shut it down. I know we're tight on time and please let us know, questions, comments, anything. Just let us know at a hundred rural women. And thank you all for coming today. And this was amazing. So thanks again, Sheila.